Good evening. The 67th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to members who are joining us today in the chambers, I ask that you turn your electronic devices off. If you can't do that for me, I ask that at a minimum you put them on silent so you do not disrupt today's proceedings. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by the amazing Pastor Mark James of Barnes Memorial Church. It is our pleasure and honor to have you. Mr. Pastor, the floor is yours.
Heavenly Father, maker of all creation, we give you glory in this moment, and we thank you for the opportunity to just approach your throne of grace and to ask my God for the skill and the wit amongst my God these that are gathered to meet and to make critical decisions concerning the fate of our city. We love you and we thank you, Lord. And as we pray, we ask, Lord, that you would touch Mr. President, Mr. Nick Mosby, and the entire circuit of all 14 districts represented here that make up our city. God, let your grace hover in this room. Let every bill that's introduced and every decision made, my God, every resolution reached and considered, let it be for the betterment of our city. Look on every area and every issue that confronts our city with challenge. You are indeed the King of peace, and so we pray for peace. We pray for those that are underserved and underprivileged, and we pray for the grace to continue, my God, to move in a way that is toward progress and so that, my God, we can be the city that you've ordained us to be. My God, turn every negative into a positive. Give us a positive outlook and give us hope to know and understand and believe in the process that we are participating in, that it indeed can lead to a brighter day for our city. We praise you and we thank you, Lord, even for our mayor. We pray, Lord, that your grace would be upon him as he continues his term. Lord, let everything done and said be to your glory, and we'll give you honor and praise in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor James. At this time, I ask everyone to please stand and join me to state the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to go into a special recognition. If I could ask the members of the Omega Psi Phi fraternity incorporated, Pi Chapter, to join me up here on the dais. On the dais?
One up here.
Up here. Come on. You get split up. For over 100 years, Pi Chapter of the Omega Psi Phi fraternity incorporated has been setting the pace. On October 28th, 1923, Pi Chapter was chartered on the campus of Morgan College in Baltimore, Maryland by eight noble men headed by the Honorable Brother Linwood G. Colgar. It is with esteemed honor that the city of Baltimore salutes the thousands of men who call Pi Chapter home and have crossed those burning sands. Your collective commitment to manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift stretches far from Baltimore and to the rest of the world. The City Council would like to honor you today with the City Council Resolution. It's a presidential citation. It says, "I, Nick Mosby, President of Baltimore City Council, do hereby present this president citation to Pi Chapter of the Omega Psi Phi fraternity incorporated in recognition of your centennial and the 100 years of your commitment and dedication to the principles of manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift. In witness whereof, the city of Baltimore extends its sincerest congratulations, and I've affixed my signature on the citation for this memorable occasion, given under the corporate seal of the city of Baltimore this 20th day of November in the year of 2023, signed by myself." Please give it up again for the greatest fraternity known to mankind. With that, Madam Clerk, we're going to start the roll. Please call a roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed to adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal for the November 6, 2023 regular meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing no objection, the journal is now adopted. A bill signed by the mayor can be found at the beginning of page two of tonight's agenda. So I just wanted to talk real quick before we jumped into today's agenda. From a clarity, purpose perspective, there's been a little confusion with redistricting and the maps. I know some members use social media and other kind of communication tools to communicate to the general public that the actual map that the mayor put into law would go into effect today and would affect our representation of those districts. That is inaccurate, so it's important to note that, you know, I asked those members to not only, I guess, maybe rescind some of that communication, but also communicate out what's right and that operationally, the new maps go into effect when the new council is sworn in come December of next year. So for all those that are listening and watching, the map that the mayor put into place is not the map today. However, that map that was passed through that ordinance will be the map for the new council. So again, I ask members who've already communicated that out to correct that and ensure that your residents have the right information. Again, this means that voters will choose their council members in the primary and general election based on the new map, but you represent the same districts that you were elected to represent. If you or your staff have provided, again, this misinformation on social media, I strongly urge you to please take it down and please try to clear up any confusion that might persist. We all on the same page? All right. If there's any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or our general counsel. Yes, sir. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very confused by this. The ordinance specifically reads that this ordinance takes effect on the date that is enacted. To me, that means that this redistricting map has taken effect, just like what happened with the General Assembly two years ago, where the whole election had to be delayed specifically so that the issue of the redistricting could be resolved in time for an election to take place under the new redistricting map.
Yes.
So have you received, do you have a written opinion on this that you can share with the council?
Councilman Dorsey, when you're finished, I'll proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You can turn your mic off and sit down. Yes, there's an opinion from the Law Department in 2011. It's like legal fiction, kind of what we're in, so it does explicitly read that it's an ordinance. Obviously, that's the guidance that this Law Department went off of to determine that we couldn't veto and to do the other things. However, there is a full opinion that basically states when the new council is sworn in, that district will become that. So folks represented you to represent their district. They didn't represent you to kind of be part of a district that the mayor pushed into law. So we had the opinion. We'll send the opinion around. If there's any additional questions or concerns, we can talk about it. Any other questions? So you will all have the opinion that we have, okay? Just want to make sure we made that very clear. With that, we're going to go into bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please call first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0451, Franchise Superstructure Four-story Bridgeway Spanning a 10-foot Alley in the Rear of 2434 to 2444 Greenmount Avenue and in the Rear of 2439 to 2449 Brentwood Avenue for the Purpose of Granting a Franchise to Concord Communities 1 LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company. Its successors in a science hearing after refer to its grantee to maintain and operate at its own cost and expense for a period not exceeding 25 years of private four-story superstructure or bridgeway spanning a 10-foot alley in the rear of 2434 to 2448 Greenmount Avenue and in the rear of 2439 to 2449 Brentwood Avenue, subject to certain terms, conditions, and more fully described herein in Section 1 and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors the administration.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0452, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor Arts and Culture, $581,334 for the Purpose of Providing a Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation in the Amount of $581,334 to Arts and Culture Service, 824 Events, Art, Culture, and Film to Provide Funding for General Operations and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsors the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0453, Tax Credit Brownfields Incentive Program Termination of Program Participation for the Purpose of Winding Down the City of Baltimore's Participation in the Brownfields Incentive Program and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsor Ramos.
This bill is assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0454, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, 1022 West Landville Street for the Purpose of Permitting, Subject to Certain Conditions, the Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit into Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District on the Property Known as 1022 West Landville Street, Block 0092, Lot 030, is outlined in red on the accompanying plaque and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsor Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0455, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Four Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, 1127 North Caroline Street for the Purpose of Permitting, Subject to Certain Conditions, the Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit into Four Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District on the Property Known as 1127 North Caroline Street, Block 1177, Lot 033, is outlined in red on the accompanying plaque and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsor Stokes.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, if we could, please go into resolutions.
City Council Resolution 23-0198R, Request for Federal Action, Support Medicare for All for the Purpose of Urging President Joseph R. Biden and the United States Congress to Expand Medicare into a Federal Single-Payer System to Provide Health Care to All Americans. Sponsors Burnett and Ramos.
At this time, the council would like to recognize sponsor of the bill. Councilman Burnett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. So this is a request for federal action in support of Medicare for All. As we know, one of the biggest impediments for people to equitably receive access to health care, which is something that we literally all need, is the high cost and the high burden that is placed on citizens who either have private insurance or inadequate insurance or are older adults who are barely able to afford medications. And we have a solution that's been out for a very long time, and that's Medicare for All, to just provide that as a single payer system so that everybody has access to care and can support their families in a more equitable way. And so just asking, and I want to thank the advocates who've been pushing these resolutions across the country to try and show that there are municipalities that understand fully that our constituents, in order to thrive, fully need access to health care. And so just trying to send a message that we are in support of that. And, Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Councilman Burnett?
I'd like to move the resolution for immediate adoption, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. Next up, we have City Council Resolution. Madam Clerk, if you could please call it into...
Yep. 23-0199R, Request for Federal Action, Recall Kia and Hyundai Models Vulnerable to Theft for the Purpose of Calling on the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to Issue a Recall of Kia and Hyundai Models Lacking Immobilizer Technology That Are Vulnerable to Theft. Sponsor Cohen.
Sponsor Bill. Councilman Cohen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand before you today to introduce a resolution urging the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to implement a nationwide recall of certain Kia and Hyundai models, which, due to a manufacturing defect, are highly susceptible to theft. Over the past year, car thefts in Baltimore have surged by 220-plus percent, with nearly half involving Kia and Hyundai models. Per perspective, as of October 31st, 2023, 2,645 Hyundai vehicles and 1,091 Kia vehicles have been stolen in Baltimore City just this year. Those are staggering numbers, given Kia and Hyundai cars constitute only 15% of registered vehicles in our city. The widespread awareness among thieves about the manufacturing flaws in the absence of a mandatory recall to curb this defect makes Kia and Hyundai owners prime targets for car theft and vandalism in our city and nationwide. The rising theft of Kia and Hyundai is not a local concern. We will be joined by other cities that are considering a similar resolution, including New York and Rochester, as well as Philadelphia. I look forward to coordinating our efforts with those cities, and I ask to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, rules are suspended. Mr. Councilman, the floor is yours. What is the resolution? Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This resolution has been adopted. Madam Clerk, if you could please go into the next resolution.
City Council Resolution 23-0200R, Informational Hearing, School-Based Health Clinics for the Purpose of Inviting Representatives from the Baltimore City Public School System, the Baltimore Health Department, the Maryland Department of Health, the mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and other relevant stakeholders to discuss the development, expansion, and preservation of school-based health clinics throughout the Baltimore City Public School System. Sponsors Porter and Bullock.
At this time, I would like to recognize sponsor of the bill. Councilwoman Porter, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. We all know that school-based health clinics are some of the touches, first touches that youth and young adults have within our school system, and this is an opportunity for us to really understand our school-based health clinics and see how we can expand them to more of a community-centered healthcare model for the city of Baltimore. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. This bill has been assigned to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Resolution 23-0201R, Informational Hearing, Medical Waste Incinerators for the Purpose of Inviting Representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Baltimore Health Department, Baltimore City Hospitals, Institutions That Make Use of Medical Waste Incinerators in Baltimore City, and Any Other Relevant Stakeholders to Discuss: One, which local hospitals send waste to medical incinerators in Baltimore City and which local hospitals do not? Two, what if any oversight mechanisms these hospitals have in place over their hazardous waste disposal service contracts? Three, the sustainability, environmental, and environmental justice commitments local hospitals have made and how these commitments may conflict with service contracts the hospitals have with medical waste incineration companies that have long histories of environmental violations? And four, what hospitals intend to do in the immediate future to mitigate the negative effects of their medical waste disposal on Baltimore's communities? Sponsors Porter and Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, the sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Porter, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Again, this is a step forward in relation to environmental justice. This follows up on the landmark victory the Maryland State Attorney General had for the Curtis Bay community related to the medical waste incinerator in the community. And so I look forward to my colleague's support on this. This is an opportunity for us to, again, right the wrong and provide more equitable environmental justice terms for those living in those communities in South Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Porter. This bill has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the last resolution.
City Council Resolution 23-0202R, Informational Hearing, Deed Fraud for the Purpose of Inviting Representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Department of Finance, the Department of Law, Baltimore Development Corporation, the Office of the Clerk of the Court for the Circuit Court for Baltimore City, and the Consumer Protection Division of the Office of the Attorney General to: One, provide background information on the crime of obtaining a title to real property by fraud, also known as deed fraud, title theft, or house stealing. Two, discuss the prevalence of deed fraud within the city of Baltimore. Three, present on what, if any, systems exist that proactively combat the commission of deed fraud. And four, present how, if necessary, the city may better protect real property owners from becoming victims of deed fraud. Sponsor Bullock.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill. Chairman Bullock, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. Deed fraud is a phenomenon that's been happening around the country in some markets like Philadelphia and New York, particularly as we've been seeing an uptick in transactions. As you know, Baltimore is a jewel, and a lot of people are descending upon our neighborhoods. And with that in mind, I think it's important that our citizenry are protected, particularly our legacy homeowners and seniors who may not be aware of this phenomenon of people putting their, fixing their names to titles and deeds for property. So again, just trying to get some more information and clarity in terms of how this is affecting Baltimore, what potentially we can do about it. So again, appreciate the opportunity to gain some more information about this.
Thank you so much. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. We're going to move on to Consent Calendar. You can find Consent Calendar in the back of section... Oh. You want to go on as a co-sponsor? All right. Please, Madam Executive Secretary, if you could include Councilwoman Porter, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Burnett, Madam Vice President, Councilman Torrance, Councilman Dorsey, on as co-sponsors. Again, this bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. Now we're going to move on to Consent Calendar. You can find the Consent Calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion for us to approve the Consent Calendar? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion will carry, and the Consent Calendar is now approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I'd like to call on Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for the duration of today's proceedings. Hearing and seeing none, we're now in short titles. First bill, we're going to go to committee as a whole. Madam Clerk, if you could please call it into record.
City Council Bill 22-0195, Inclusionary Housing for Baltimore City.
At this time, I'd like to recognize sponsor of the bill. She's going to be the floor leader for the bill tonight, and that is Councilwoman Odette Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. The committee of the whole held several hearings on this bill and voted out amendments in committee the other night. The amendments that the committee voted out are on your desk. I move the amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The amendments are adopted. Madam Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, there are several floor amendments, and I'll start with mine and then go into yours, if that's okay?
Yes.
Members, colleagues, you have on your desks, and you saw earlier today, several amendments to the Inclusionary Housing Bill. Amendment number one is the definition of penthouse, because later in the bill, we remove penthouses from the count of inclusionary housing. Amendment number two is, takes out student housing as one of, so student housing becomes something that is exempt from the bill. Amendment number three is just moving the clause from simultaneous offering to another part of the bill. Amendment number four is to create a new subject, a new section called Affordable Unit Count, and this is a way to cut costs for the city that, in general, the mix of affordable units required must be at the same ratio of offerings, that if the units have a specific floor, a unified floor plan, that the inclusionary unit has the lowest monthly rent, and we are excluding specifically townhouses. And amendment number five is all of the details that we discussed earlier about the study that would come into play at 200 units, and that way that we have a lot of opportunity for analysis. And number five, just being very clear, that the affordable housing units created by the ordinance remain affordable for the life of the affordability period. Mr. President, I move the amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. The committee accepts these amendments as friendly amendments, just for the record. At this point, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are adopted. Madam Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, there are additional floor amendments on my colleague's desk, and two of them are yours. I yield two.
No, you can read them.
Sure. Okay. So amendment number one, presented by Council President Mosby, changes the percentage of units that need to be affordable. The original bill has 10% at 60% of AMI. The amendment number one changes that to 5% at 60% of AMI and 5% at 50% of AMI. And amendment number two basically says that it's, in addition to having the study at 200 units, that we're adding language that says, "and/or three years of the program once the first tax credits are issued," and that basically changes the language to say it's 200 units or three years, whichever comes first for the study.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Madam Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleague, oh, no, I have, that's it for this bill. No, he's in the next one.
Oh, the next one, you're right.
Yep. Mr. President, I move the bill as amended.
You have a floor amendment?
On this one?
For this bill?
I think it's the tax credit bill.
You have it for the next bill.
Next bill.
Any unreadiness? We're good? All right. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. I hear one nay from Chairman Schleifer. This bill is approved, and we will move on for third reading. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you... At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please read the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0369, High Performance Inclusionary Housing Tax Credit.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Odette Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee also held two or three hearings on this bill. The committee of the whole voted on amendments that are on my colleague's desk. I move the committee amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are approved. Madam Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have a floor, a couple of floor amendments for this bill as well.
Please move yours first.
Great. I will do that. I just had them. Here they are. Colleagues, on your desk are floor amendments for Council Bill 23-0369, and amendment number one just create, corrects a typo from 2014 to 2024. Amendment number two basically strikes line 14 through 26, which is the language that says that historic properties would be exempt from the tax credit. That is no longer the case, and keeps the original language under that section. Mr. President, I move the amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. The amendment is approved. Madam Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleague from the 7th District has a floor amendment.
Oh, before, just please read it in. You're the floor leader. Odette, you know what it is.
I just had it. Nope, I have it. Torrance Amendment for Council Bill 23-0369. Amendment number one reads, and it is only one amendment, that notwithstanding any other provision, it says Section 2, "Notwithstanding any other provision of this ordinance, no further high-performance inclusionary housing tax credit shall be granted beyond 400 affordable units..." shall be granted beyond 400 affordable units that have been completed and occupied."
At this time, you'd like to allow-
I yield to the Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Floor Leader. I rise because I sat in negotiations this weekend, listening both to advocates, the administration, development community. One of the agreements that we had was putting some cap, and that was on the tax credit. That was answering many of our colleagues' questions in terms of affordability. But also, we made sure the provision stayed so that the actual bill itself, which is the actual law and program, did not have the cap in it itself. But the financing portion for the tax credit had a cap. However, when we talk to not only the Law Department Administration, there are other means in which we can pay for the affordable inclusionary housing. So I just want to make sure that that is clear to everyone here, that this is not just a tool, it's one of the tools, as well as other tools, that we can use to pay for this program. With that, I yield and urge your support.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. I would like to state for the record that the body, the committee, takes this as an unfriendly amendment. You know, one of the core competencies that we've been working through is having no caps, like many other tax credits. We wanted this to be citywide, like was originally intended, and we wanted to ensure that low-income residents had an opportunity at this program. This goes against one of those pillars of having no cap. So again, the committee rejects and does not see this as a friendly amendment. Councilwoman Odette Ramos, the floor is yours.
You need to move the bill.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Nay. I think we're going to have to have a rule call.
President Mosby?
Nay.
Cohen? McCray? Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Costello? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
Yes, six yeses.
The amendment fails with six yeses, eight nos, eight nays, and one abstention. Madam Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable with amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill moves forward to third reading. Let's give a huge- So there's been a tremendous amount of work that's been put on both bills. Obviously, I constantly say there's no perfect bill, nor is there a perfect process, and clearly, a process that has spanned almost 17 months for a bill that has been ineffective for our residents of our city of Baltimore for almost two decades is not the type of timeline that we want to be on. But I think that this is a bill that we can all be extremely proud of. I'd like to thank all the hard work from Councilwoman Odette Ramos, who has been the floor leader on this bill and championing it with me this entire time. I'd like to thank the Council President's staff. I would like to thank DLR, as well as Legislative Services, for all the hard work. I would also like to thank the mayor's team, you know, how, you know, some of the things we couldn't get on the same page. But the reality was, I think that when we look at where we've come from, there's been a lot of work and a lot of effort and coordination. And then lastly, I would like to thank the advocates who have been sticklers in ensuring that this effort is raised. I'm proud of this effort. This is an effort that I championed when I was a council member. And now, to be able to try to push this thing forward as council president is definitely something that I'm excited about, and truly, truly appreciative of all the hands and brain power that has been put into a bill that, again, we can all be proud of. With that, Madam Clerk, if you could call the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0366, Zoning, Conditional Use of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, 2001 Boom Street.
At this time, I'd like to call Chair of the Committee, Chairman, Chairwoman, Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill number 23-0366, this bill was heard on November 7, 2023. It was voted favorable. We have the finding of facts are on my colleague's desk. I move the finding of facts.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Finding of the facts are now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill will be printed for third reading. At this time, Madam Clerk, please call in the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0386, Landmark List, Home of the Friendless.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Bill number 23-0386, this resolution was also heard on November 7, 2023. It was voted favorable. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The- We didn't have to do finding of facts with that, right?
No.
Yeah, the ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, please call the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0429, South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District Management Authority, Board of Directors.
Body yields to Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Bill number 23-0429, this resolution was also heard on November 7, 2023. It was voted favorable as amended. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Was there a nay? All ayes. That is adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And just a note, they were just really technical amendments for clarity of the bill. And I move the bill as favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will be printed for third reading. Now, we're going to turn it over to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Madam Clerk, if you could please call in the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0189R, Informational Hearing, Athletic Trainers in Baltimore City Schools.
The body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Stokes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on November 16, 2023, for the Council Resolution, Athletic Trainers and City Schools. Before I moved the resolution, I thought it was important that because Elijah Gorm lost his life playing football, high school football, he, you know, he loved that game. It's a dangerous game. But I'm glad to hear that the school system are moving forward to hire some athletic trainers, because our kids, if they want to play sports, they deserve to be safe. So I move the resolution favorable.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill, the resolution, sorry, is adopted. One small thing I want to say, and coaches deserve to be coaches and not trainers. You know, sometimes you see a coach trying to coach the game as well as tape up someone's ankle. It's not the most effective or efficient way of coaching a game, particularly when you're playing school districts that have trainers and have other coaches. So we expect a lot, not only from our teachers, but also other professionals that work in the school environment, and this is just one way to ensure that our young folks are safe, but then our coaches can coach. And we have actual trainers who are subject matter experts at being trainers as opposed to coaches trying to be trainers. Mr., Madam Clerk, if you could please call in the next bill.
City Council.
23-109. What's wrong? Oh, we have to do a roll call? Oh, sorry, we're going to have to go back to 23-0189R and do a roll call. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Cohen? McCray? Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Costello? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
The resolution has been adopted. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0190R, Informational Hearing, Baltimore City Schools, Payments to Vendors.
This time, I recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on November 16, 2023, on Council Resolution 23-0190R, Baltimore City School Payments to Vendors. Before I move this resolution, I'll only say one thing. If you do the work on time, you should get paid on time. I move the resolution favorable.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Actually, we're going to do a roll call on this as well. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Cohen? McCray? Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Costello? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
The resolution is adopted. Madam Clerk, if you could go into Public Safety and Government Operations.
City Council Bill 23-0187R, Informational Hearing, Theft of Cars.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chairman of the Committee, Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on November 8, 2023, and voted favorably on the resolution. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Actually, we're going to go into roll call again.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Cohen? McCray? Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Costello? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
The resolution has been adopted. Now, we're going to turn the bills on third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0372, Office of City Stat, Establishment and Administration. President Mosby?
Finally.
President Mosby, Cohen? McCray? Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Costello? Stokes? Glover? Ramos?
Bill's approved. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 23-0413, The Solid Waste Management Plan for Baltimore, Repeal and Replace. President Mosby? Cohen? McCray? Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Burnett? Bullock? Porter? Costello? Stokes? Glover? And Ramos?
This bill is approved. Next bill, we have bill that was going to be withdrawn. Madam Clerk, if you could please call in the roll.
City Council Bill 22-0290, South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District Management Authority, Board of Directors, Term Limit. Sponsor was Costello and Porter.
Thank you. Now, we're going to turn it over to Community, Committee, sorry, announcements. The first up, we're going to go to ECD. Floor is yours. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee would like to announce the following hearing, which has been postponed at the request of the sponsor. It's, so it is postponed from December 5, 2023. It was held, was supposed to be held at 3:30 PM, and again, that's Bill number 23-0357, the Strengthening Renters Safety Act, and the sponsor is Cohen.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to go to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Next, Health, Environment, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Council Bill 23-0418, Tobacco Products, Tobacco Product Use in Stadiums, on Wednesday, January 24, 2024, at 10:01 AM. The hearing will be held in the council chambers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, we're going to go to Public Safety Government Operations. Chairman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear Bill 23-0182R, Hearing on the Regional Water Governance Task Force, sponsored Councilwoman Ramos, on Wednesday, January 17, 2024, at 1 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to go to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer?
President, the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on Bill Number EA 23-0212 on November 30 at 4 PM for David Marcuzzi, member of the BMZA. Hold another hearing on EA 23-0213 on November 30 at 4:05 for Elizabeth Cornish, member of the BMZA. And we'll also hold a Bill Number LO 23-0047 on November 30 at 4:10 on an oversight hearing on the resumption of weekly recycling in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November 28 at 10 AM. City Council Bill 23-0440, Sale of Property. Market Center Renewal Plan, Area 32 Properties, which are located in the 11th District. Ways and Means Committee also on Thursday, December 14 will hold a hearing at 1 PM. This is Legislative Oversight, LO 23-0047. Mr. President, I want to thank you for your leadership on this issue. This hearing is for the purpose of discussing the topic of the city's financial readiness to maximize the opportunities the Biden administration has presented with the Tech Hub Zone Initiative. Now, the Baltimore Tech Hub is an effort being led by the Greater Baltimore Committee, which aims to develop innovative predictive healthcare technologies by applying artificial intelligence to biotechnologies. At this panel-style hearing, the first of multiple hearings, we'll have the Greater Baltimore Committee, Baltimore Development Corporation, Department of Finance, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, along with anchor institutions and other private sector partners to discuss the steps that the city needs to take to fully embrace this initiative moving forward to help ensure that our tech sector is as successful as humanly possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you for your leadership on this. As the chairman just discussed, we, you know, have all the attributes. We have the healthcare institution. We have the intellectual capacity, and we have the brain power. We have the proximity from a geography perspective. All of it's here. We want to ensure that our city government and its agencies are prepared and are proactive to ensure that we can take advantage of it and that the private industry nor the federal government kind of has granted us this designation, but looks over us because maybe local government's not ready. So we look forward to work with the agencies. We look forward to working with the mayor and the administration to ensure that this council can do all that we can do to put Baltimore in the best position to capture as much funding and attention around this tech hub as possible. Last but not least, Finance and Performance. There are no announcements there. We're going to turn it over to the full council for any regular announcements. I'd like to call Chairman Bullock.
Mr. President, I believe it's important for us to recognize when our colleagues go above and beyond the call of duty. And so, Councilman Tony Glover, I do want to recognize him. One of the things that we may know in our city, some of us know that, we deal with these mounds of tires that get dumped in different parts of our city. I've passed by a number of them. But the fact that Councilman Glover not only spotted the culprit and led to his conviction, I'm extremely proud of him. So thank you for doing this work and let it be known to our citizens in Baltimore to also, when you see something, say something so we can act on it. Good work.
And if you haven't seen the video, it's must-watch television. He's on a stakeout. He confronts the people, chases them down alleys, you know. Too bad we don't have cameras in courtrooms. He was in the courtroom the entire time. And then, what many folks don't know is even after it, he's developed a relationship with the guy that was extremely apologetic and looks forward to kind of continue to pour back into the community. So it's definitely a great all-around story. And like the chairman said, we truly, truly appreciate your leadership, Councilmen, on that. Councilman Glover. Chairman Stokes? You have to stand.
Hello? Councilman Glover, can you come over to my district? Because I have a lot of tire dumping, so let me know when you're available. Thank you, Mr. President.
Next up, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, a moment of silence for Mark Vey, V-E-Y. He was the founding market master at the 32nd Street Waverly Farmers Market, and he suddenly passed this weekend. So we send our condolences to- So we send our condolences to his family and everybody that's worked so hard on the Waverly Farmers Market for over forty years. On the good news side, I just want to remind everybody that the best place to be for the holidays is the Fourteenth District. The Thirty-fourth Street Lights are just probably one of the best spectacles in the entire region. I invite everybody to come and enjoy such a great way that our residents on Thirty-fourth Street, the seven-hundred block, have been bringing joy to residents for the last forty-nine years. So I welcome all of my colleagues to join us there. The lighting of the block is this coming Saturday at six P.M. Also, this coming Saturday, of course, is Small Business Saturday. It's a great time to support our local small businesses. They are our neighbors, they are our family members, and so I represent several business districts, so I look forward to supporting our small businesses and welcome all of our colleagues to the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett? Okay, come back. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to invite everyone in Baltimore City to the Fiftieth Annual Mayor's Christmas Parade in Hampden, Metfield, Holes Heights. It will start promptly this Sunday at one P.M., and go read this.
And Councilman, can you also, next time, remind us about the light show at Druid Hill Park? I think this is the first annual one?
Yes.
Do you know the details there?
The light show does begin, sorry, apologies. The light show does start next week. It will roll until January first. This is a beautiful, thank you, Mr. President, for reminding me. It is almost a two-mile course through Druid Hill Park, where you'll be able to walk through, remember how we have holiday lights in Howard County? Now bring all your friends and family to Baltimore City. This will be going on until January first. I reckon Parks employees have planned this perfectly, just like they did the Halloween haunted house throughout the entire Druid Hill Park. Please, please, please plan appropriately and don't park on my grass, but always come out and enjoy.
Anyone else? Any other? You okay? Like to go to Councilman Burnett?
Mr. President, sorry, just want to make sure I have the right flyer. So one of the things that folks in West Baltimore know is that the Emmonson Village Shopping Center Christmas lights used to be a huge draw, not quite what we have in Hampden, but the new ownership of the shopping center is going to be putting lights back up, though not as extravagant as it used to be, because there's, it's going to be a construction site in a few weeks, so just bear with us. But the first rollout will be of that, and we also have Santa Claus and a lot of other events happening, I mean, vendors coming, that's going to be hosted by the Emmonson Village Task Force in my office on December eighth, with the range date of December fifteenth, from four to eight in the lower Emmonson Village parking lot. I want to thank Chicago Trend, the Emmonson Village Task Force, and all the residents who have been a part of this huge fight to bring and restore the glory of the center, and this is one way, I think, we can restore that pride of what it used to be. And so come on out, meet Santa Claus, drink some cider, and enjoy on December eighth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other community announcements or regular announcements? We would also like to have a moment of silence for Ms. Rosalyn Carter, has done amazing work for Habitat for Humanity, so we want to lift her up, as well as her family and all her coworkers and folks who live, she's impacted over the years. With that, we're going to turn it over to Madam Vice President.
The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, December fourth, two thousand twenty-three, at five P.M. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the now two-hundred-and-thirty-eight victims of homicide this year, and also a moment of silence for Mark Vey, Rosalyn Carter, and also would like to add Joseph George Sagal II, which was the executive director of the Maryland Transportation Authority, passed away suddenly the end of October. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no new business before the death of the city, of the city council. This concludes the sixty-seventh meeting of the seventy-three term of your Baltimore City Council. For Baltimore, we absolutely love you.